Because I can't see from here. They memorize all the icons and sure.
All right, six o'clock, we call a meeting to order. We could all please rise for the pledge of allegiance on our memorial day. Upcoming.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will need approval of the agenda.
I'll prove the agenda. One day maybe twenty-four.
I have a motion in second, all in favor? Aye. Ours then is approved. Full business. Where exactly are we at with our financing?
On the public works police facility, we're still waiting on USDA. They're still reviewing our paperwork. You might remember that, but excuse me, final resolution was signed at the May tenth meeting, so it's all in USDA's hands at the moment. That's kind of.
They had an estimated timeline of a month, right?
Yeah, I don't know if we're gonna get it before the meeting or not. It would be nice that we can start the bidding process. I had gotten a few few bid insights from a couple other cities from Todd. Hey, getting that, so the city manometer is building new fire hall. And they only got one bid, but their bid came in under their threshold. And then there was another city, let's say Princeton, that was also building a facility and they had two bids and they both came in fifty percent above the estimate. So.
Above?
Above, so kind of a crapshoot at this point.
How much wood are we putting in on building?
How much wood?
Just though, I mean, no more than you have to.
I'm just trying to see how much of the inflation we're gonna go up on ours in most of our steel, right?
Yeah, other than the skeleton and the framework.
I don't know, I mean, every job is different. But other than that, I really don't have anything more to update on. Plan's basically ready and we're just waiting for USDA to approve those plans so that bids can be put out. I would strongly suggest that we agree to put the bids out in order just in American or
Please.
Our dedicated publication. I have had one construction company out of Fargo that's interested in bidding on it. We had a long conversation with that gentleman Friday afternoon that he was gonna keep us on board. You know, I mean, just putting the publication in the American for the liquor store was thirty dollars. It's twice if not more for the pioneers, so each publication to do. But I guess in the long run it saves us.
Thousands.
Yeah.
Yep. If you don't go with wood for your shell and go steal stuff, I mean.
We're already way past that.
There you have it.
Yeah, we're all, we're designed and everything, we've got almost a hundred thousand in the bits. Other design process.
It's just USDA has to approve all the plans because they're gonna be our financial backers, so once they approve it, then we can go to bid. We can't do bid beforehand because they are the ones controlling her.
And when we started this, inflation price of wood was not worth it. It was definitely the wage you brought.
So the, the city has a couple options if it ends up being that worst case scenario. It can put the project on hold a year if inflation goes down or if you continue to pursue it.
I would pull money from the pond.
Well, the price, the price of lumber here is gonna come back now, I mean.
You heard something we haven't?
Yeah, yeah, it's coming back, it will come back.
Oh, I hope so, because there, what I've been reading this is another year.
Well, it's good, well, I didn't say like tomorrow.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else on mine? I have nothing on the building. Cause last I've, I haven't received anything on either. Liquor store.
Um, the liquor store met with Carl Anderson a couple days after the council meeting, went through preliminary schedule. Looks like Carl will be ready to start sometime around the first of June. You may notice that there's a storage.
Really the first?
Well, that's what Tom Tessier told John.
I thought it was the fifteenth.
Mobilization the fifteenth, but there are some things that we can start to do prior to them actually mobilizing to start actual ground on it.
Like the, the rear storage facility area has to be cleared out so they can start, you know, moving around in the building. So that's where that bin is in the back of the building right now. So once, once our staff gets all the inventory moved back in there for storage, then it makes their mobilization start easier. And Shonda and I are still working on my sale quotes from a couple entities, as I mentioned at the council meeting. Getting some quotes on inventory racking as well, that's not really something that's our contribution to the project. I am going back to square one with another security company for another estimate. The original security quote I received from Arvig to update the existing system, cameras and doors was a lot higher than I anticipated. Although I understand one of the reasons for it is that the existing system we have right now is from two thousand and eleven, so it's hand made, we can't update it. So a lot of it is gonna be brand new. I just wanna get a understanding of if there's another company over there that could potentially give us a better deal or something that isn't so entirely high advanced, so like Parma Security out of this, out of the midgie is gonna come Thursday.
So when you say you, you mean Shonda and Liquor Store?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I do have, I am on Facebook for MMBA members, we have our own Facebook page, questions and answers and whatnot. There's somebody else that was looking for a security system as well. They were putting out there asking, I will check in with that a little more.
Who that vendor was.
Who their vendors are, cause I know that, I noticed that they have like twenty-five more answers to their question. So I will do a little more research.
Arvig is our security company that we use right now and everyone's installed the existing.
But it's an analog system, not a digital system.
Not a digital system, so it would be highly upgraded from. I just don't want us to put some quote that I got, there's really no explanation, like, did you give me, give us a level one, two and three of different types of systems that could go into the liquor store? Or is this the only one you're gonna do and it's the most expensive? I haven't even spoken to the gentleman that provided the quote to us yet.
I mean, absolutely no disrespect, but this is what the pond wants.
Yes.
Okay.
We have to have some kind of a better.
Right.
I was gonna ask Chase from the police point of view, can we even make out somebody's face if they're on that camera?
It's, it's better than some of them alter, but it, I don't know, I, I haven't looked, didn't know what you guys are looking at, but resolution of the cameras was comparable and you can add a bunch of cameras to a hard drive and it shouldn't be astronomical cost.
In cost, no, but in the daily downloading of the videos, you might get a couple days.
Thirty days usually.
Yeah, but if you start upgrading your cameras, that thirty days.
Right, but you could, you could get more bigger hardware.
Correct.
I'm, I'm just, I, I haven't looked at, I have no idea what you guys are looking at, but if I, my two cents are invest in quality of the cameras and more of them. So there's not dead spots and maybe not be having to pay someone monthly fees for a security system that they installed that. My.
You're talking more install their own system, have somebody install it, but.
Get a huge, get a huge hard drive and throw us a bunch of good cameras.
But what you don't get by doing that is Arvig is too old, it's not just a security system, but it's also the ones on the doors. They also have monitoring that we do for too. So if there is a break in and no one's there. They notify us.
Sure.
Okay, without that, they could be long gone by then.
Right, but I think where Jason's going, it's gonna be cheaper just to use them for the security system versus surveillance system as well, kind of.
They then just do the monitoring of the doors?
Correct.
I, I haven't looked at any numbers, like, my, my only two cents are good quality cameras and there's been a lot of them, it's all my two cents.
Yeah, I'm seeing right now at the.
And strong doors.
No.
I mean, knock on wood, but strong doors.
Pictures.
Keep people away, how many times have you been broken?
No.
Knock on wood, but you can put in really good doors and invest in very, very good doors, how are they gonna get it? But security is always good, so I'm not deterred out there.
Oh, you guys got a great response when I accidentally tripped the alarm off. I think you guys are under five minutes.
Yeah, somebody hit the fan button. Danny's right here, it's okay, everybody's fine, don't, don't send the national car. Accidentally hit it, I reset it, we're good.
But anyway, I'm guessing summary, things are gonna start moving in the next few weeks here.
Yeah, Shonda and I have got a little more of a plan on what we got going on and touching base with everybody. A little more defined.
An area on the off sale will still be able to have a customer service area with, say, built. Yeah, that's gonna, that's one of the first things. Moved is, of the, the wall is being built between the two businesses. Well, there's some relocation of a few things that have to happen just to continue having the business open.
Chamber was, one of the questions that got brought up was how long do we plan on having the kitchen down?
You are looking at three to four.
That's just.
That's what they were, that's what Tom told us at the meeting.
And that's for the grill or for the air fryer?
That's for the whole kitchen, cause you can't.
What we would have to do is in order for us to actually get the kitchen done the right way, we're gonna put up like a false wall to break it off.
Right.
From the wire. And since they're doing, wow, sewer work or water lines and stuff like that in, that are in our office, cause the bathroom's right behind it. You can't have any open lines and have food.
All right, so you can't even offer bar food?
I can offer pizzas.
Right, that's what I'm going with.
Yes.
Wouldn't that be the same thing as for the air fryer?
No, because it has to have itself contained, yes, but it needs to be in the kitchen area, I can't just take it out and put it in the bar.
Oh, so it can't be like, right, it's, so it's a different set of rules from the
Yes.
From the pizza.
Yes, the pizza ovens are a different setup than any kind of like our flat top or the fryer, even though the fryer itself is NSF approved and contains self-contained.
That needs a hood though.
It still needs to be backed by the hood. We're trying our best to make sure that's not where we go, but.
Well, three weeks isn't.
No.
And this way, doing it that way, you're not doing it in sections, they can just go in, take it all, get it all done, get it all wired, get it all ready to go. We can't just get everything in.
Yeah, I think that's pretty smart, getting it done before the big seasons.
Yes, so that, we are, you are looking at probably at least a three week, maybe four week. That's not my ideal wanna go with, but that's, the construction people have given us very time. Somebody add.
Anything else you'd like to elaborate on the pond?
Nothing I can think of right offhand.
Any other questions for me?
Do you have any update on your AC?
I do. He is supposed to get in touch with us.
If he doesn't, I wanna know.
Oh, you.
I know. I think the more people that call, the better.
Yes, it's, um, he was in contact with Shonda last week, he was on vacation, so apparently, oh, he said that he would. We are in the priority of this list, it should be something started this.
Just a quick thing, is, the AC units are not gonna interfere with anything Carl has to do.
Yeah. No.
I think one is the newest, the newest one that's back there for the cooler currently is in the way of the ice machine out back. You know, we talked about that a little bit when I was down there the other day.
The condit, the compressor for the
No, back there, because
Walk-in.
According to the plan, from what I see, there's going to be a new sidewalk there.
Yes, we were talking about that.
They're gonna have to move that in order to put sidewalk in at some point.
I don't know why we would need a sidewalk back there.
That current cooler is gonna have to be disconnected or something. The walls are gonna do it.
Yeah, cause according to the plans, it looks like they wanna sidewalk around the
Well, I'm just wondering about what our air conditioner installers, I don't want people bashing into each other when they.
Where those ones are, the, the new units that are being put in, where they're looking at the back door, got the three old units to the salt side of the door. I believe he's putting them right back.
They are, those three units are coming down, three ones, new ones are going in.
He's got them.
No, no.
That was my.
He's got everything actually vented in to the back there, furnace room. So he was there before he went on vacation, he has everything vented and piped.
So it's just the wiring is gonna be level removal and then starting with new wires, I should have.
Yeah, you just gotta put in the, running the lines in your wiring and they should be.
It does bring up the question though, is it gonna be concrete for the sidewalk? Because air conditioners, they have to be.
They are ink, they're already sitting on concrete pad.
All right, so that, so the sidewalk will just.
That sidewalk, there will be nothing on that side of the building. No sidewalk will go past the door.
All right.
So anything from the electrical box, the main electrical box and the three air conditioners, nothing has to be done on that side of the wall. And they do sit on concrete pads already.
Yeah, yeah, they have to.
So yes, Mike, you're concerned with that.
That's my only question on that.
Compressor floor of that walk-in cooler, which I don't know why we're doing this.
Well, and the thing is that there's existing tar there that needs to be removed too.
Underneath it, yes.
Old, old asphalt back there that needs to be ripped out. Which also brings me to the next thing, that Frost Oil deal that we talked about in the meeting. I don't know if you had reached out to them, that was kind of my takeaway at the meeting, that you were gonna talk to is that his name?
Tom Tessier.
Yeah, I don't know if you two were gonna go back and forth or if you were gonna talk to the excavator. That was my takeaway when we left, is that he was gonna put you in touch or they in touch with you.
My takeaway with that was, who was the who was the prime on that portion of it?
I don't remember who the excavator was.
I gotta go back and look at those.
I just wanna make sure that that gets taken care of before.
That we have a separate contract with that.
That was my takeaway when we were in there, is that we would end up with a, a separate side contract while they were here in excavating anyways.
So what I wrote down, Mike, was that Ryerson is the contractor that's gonna be doing that.
Yep.
And I wrote down that we should hire them directly while they're here to do that work, and I have Travis written down now, I think what I remember is that I did have contact from, for Ryerson somewhere, I just need to look it up. Cause I can't remember the last time we used them.
Not since I've been here.
Okay, I just let that slip, so let me make a note here.
Just.
Another note, so I don't forget it this time.
While they're here, make sure that it gets done so that they're not laying asphalt right over that nastiness and it's gonna just turn shit.
I think, I think Tom made a pretty lengthy note about that, but he did feel as though it was more seamless if we hired them than just
Versus.
Right, else find somebody else.
Well, versus going through Carl's.
Correct.
Sounds like it would.
Correct, with benefits, otherwise you have to.
Probably cheaper.
And cheaper, that's why. Thank you for the reminder on that one.
On a different note, for the pond. Are they gonna be able to do chamber bingo?
That is up to Scott. Yeah, I, there are gaming people, I can't.
I know that we have to, I know they want to chamber this.
We could, if we're open capacity wise now, where there's no cap on it now, we could, but that's something that they've gotta check with, their gaming.
Yeah, throw an under construction finger again.
They've got that. We have to touch base with Scott, they will have to get a call from Scott.
Well, after, we haven't done it since COVID.
We haven't done it at all, we leave in the chamber.
Yes, and since Johnny left, then yeah, yeah, I don't know if they know who who to get ahold of.
I will reach out to Scott, I got a couple things I need to discuss with him anyway.
Well. We got one liquor store?
I have no questions. Gentlemen?
No.
I think that's it. I thought we were taking it off.
I, I did too, so.
I looked at my, I looked at my meeting notes and I didn't, I haven't any notes saying to remove it from the agenda, so.
Got any word when it's going in?
Remove it from the agenda. Remove.
We've got a spot for it.
Done, I sent, I sent an email and I haven't heard anything back. I don't know if it's kind of, all they don't want us now, they're done for us.
Right, it's gonna be D and R, so you know.
Yep, yep, D and R and county, it's out of our view.
Um, local sales tax.
I have things to update you guys on that yet. Kurt and I haven't had an opportunity to get together yet.
Nothing new on the demolition loan because.
Um.
You don't have property.
We don't have the property yet. And it's going into tax forfeiture, so I'm working with our city attorney right now to see if condemnation is a possibility. Or if we can't, if the city can work with the, the true owner and get the tax limits removed from it. And I have to speak with our attorney tomorrow and follow up on what he's clarified on the statute. He's concerned about doing a condemnation on the property because even after he signs, files the paperwork with the judge, then there's a ninety day waiting period.
So it's still fixed, bro.
So he's worried about that timeline, he's trying to find statutorily what would be the smoothest transition for the ownership to take. On, in the meantime, Steve Rose is continuing his destruction plans so that when it can go out to bid for a contractor to demolish it, that's where he would go. And he was here on Thursday last week working on some of that now that all the snow is gone from the property. He got up on the roof and thirty-two main and forty main are getting worse and worse. I said, do you need like rigging and stuff when you get up there so you don't fall through the roof? And he said, I can walk over there, but he's got some utility concerns, because by the looks of it, Anderson Fabrics propane tank is technically on thirty-two mains property. The way it's located and it's just the weirdest way that piece of property has been jigsaw puzzled back together when it was separated. So there's gonna have to be some other things that are gonna have to happen, obviously, with some other entities, utilities. And then he also found that although the theater doesn't share a common wall with forty-eight main exterior wall, it does however so what we see from the storefront of the theater is not its true original building. So there was an addition to the front put on several decades ago, and that portion of the building is connected. The roof portion to forty-eight main, so that when that portion of that property comes down, the campus are gonna have, they have to get them all so that they know that like that, those little canopies that are in front of those buildings, like those are all connected too. So some of that's gonna have to get deconstructed as well, so that's what Steve Rose is working on right now is those plans so that whoever, like I said, is a contractor is aware of what to find.
Yeah, I'm yeah. I mean, I imagine anybody that's done remodeling of an old home, you just like, you can find all kinds of stuff, so.
Yeah.
These are really old buildings, so it's, it'd be out of the norm to find this.
Oh, I just you know, wow, what a boom for summertime, we could give it all.
Holy buckets, yeah.
Did remodel, get started on Public Works Building, knock that stuff down and.
So did the lawyer give us a timeframe on when his statutory is gonna be looked up?
He, I spoke with him Friday afternoon, so he and I are gonna start tomorrow. So that, I don't have an answer to the question you just asked.
Right, I know, it's just, this has been a question that's been going on for months and I don't know, like Max says, it needs to get done sooner than later. So I mean, the thirty or the ninety days, I mean, we could already even start, we would have pushed the fact of condemnation once.
True.
True.
But yeah, even when you do that though, and then there's you just so much, and nobody, we haven't talked with anybody from the IRS on
Uh, the, the Development Corps attorney has been filing paperwork to try to get the state lanes removed, but that's just the state lanes. Not the federal lanes, the federal lanes are the biggest.
It's good, yeah.
And, and I don't wanna involve any more of the taxpayers' money in this until I know for sure that ownership is truly deed it, otherwise you know, we're just spinning our wheels and spending money that we don't have, I mean, at least the Development Corps paid for all the service fees through, for WITSET to do everything that, on the grounds to what Steve Rose is working on, so honestly it's been a little bit of attorney's time and my time that's been involved in those projects so far.
Grant process is already
Done.
Done, we've, we've been given the money, he's basically ready for us when we wanna use it, it's just getting the property out of limbo.
That's what happens when you buy a property and you have a panel search. Or sell it.
Yeah, and I don't know how much you've been brought up to speed done, but the person that supposedly owns it, you know, it was a scribed piece of paper and hey, here's the keys to my car.
Yeah.
And the person that did that should have never did it anyway, because he never filed the paperwork, but I don't even claim title it.
Some of that.
So, you know, we have really no right to do that, and it's, it's sad because that gentleman that lost his vehicle, he's the one that's getting screwed most. You know, and, and I hate to say this, Max, but worst case scenario, this project doesn't go, that money goes back to the deed. That they've already awarded us, that doesn't put us in a bad light, and the city isn't really out any taxpayers' money at this point. It's just the project doesn't go forward.
But the roofs are still gonna fall in.
If.
They are.
You know, so you still have, you still have a safety factor of.
Oh, yeah.
Case some kids climb up there, or.
It's.
They have to go.
It will happen, yeah, that's why I wanna keep working on it.
You know, I'm in construction on that lake, I'll tell you, if it started to fall in like that, then.
Well, right, and here's my question, is if, so the gentleman that, that legally owns it, he doesn't have a problem with us demolishing it?
I haven't physically spoken with that legal owner ever, yes.
Oh, shoot, I was gonna say, I say we just demolish all three of it and just work on the two.
What the, who's got the liability out of now? Who's, who's liable for them though?
The Development Corps. We have a purchase, the city has a purchase agreement with the Black Tech Development Corps, they're the ones that originally purchased two of the three. Of the buildings and own, and have liability insurance on them.
Oh, okay, that's.
The, the third one, the third one that's in limbo.
Yeah.
Is still kinda in the wind.
That's right, I was kinda wondering where was that for liability?
In order for the grant to have been applied for, then the city had to have at least purchase agreement with the existing owner. So that's all that's happened so far, because in the process of the grant application, there's also acquisition money. That, that grant will pay the Development Corps for acquiring those properties once everything is finished. But right now, the money has changed hands.
And you can't just tear down two.
Not in this case, because thirty two and forty are connected.
They're connected, so if you start tearing down, then I'm gonna go with it. Yeah, so we're here now.
That's where I'm leaning.
Well, and I, I felt this day all along, but I thought I put our city in, with nephew somewhere.
Well, you don't, you just tear them down and all of a sudden, well, hey, I didn't know your building was there.
Oh, you, but you couldn't yell it for the, it's, it is condemned, there's no other way around it, and it isn't ice lord, so I don't understand why the city doesn't have a legal stand ground.
But there is liability, I mean, for taxes, I mean. That's where you got.
But nobody's paying it.
Well, yeah, but. When you deal with the feds. That's what truly stinks.
Speaking of, well, downtown revitalization. Did you hear Paul North Good's ad on the radio?
I loved it, heard it on Friday. Yep.
She's got a great ad that plays on, it was on ninety five five. But. Draws, puts, Black Tech give me a hat, it's Main Street, right? He's got it.
Glad to still be able to listen to the radio. Hold on, that's all over here? I've never been there.
Yeah, you should go in there, you'd like it.
We would have, I like A and K's, so I thought.
Oh, you'd love it.
And, you like, Nick?
Not something too good, I don't know, they're sending it to the Budget Advisory Committee now.
What?
Well, at least it's the next step, though. Yeah, yeah, but we all said what we could do with money and how we could definitely use it in better communities. I was hoping to hear better news.
Yeah, here, take it.
But at least, like you said, it's going to be the next step. So, would it, would it benefit us to talk to that board?
Budget, what's, oh, Budget Advisory Committee?
Or that community, would it benefit the town of Black Tech to send a letter to them?
Probably wouldn't hurt it, definitely wouldn't, yeah, it wouldn't hurt our cause, but.
You know who's on the advisory committee?
I do not.
I'm assuming that listed in the minutes of their packet someplace. I can show.
Well, I don't wanna throw any media to the pot here, but it doesn't matter like they were, they weren't great the first time.
Well, that's what the, uh. They kinda wanted to do on the last meeting is send the Budget Advisory.
So what?
I have an extra copy of this.
I have the electronic, I'm just curious, yeah, cause I thought like committees were listed in here.
Yeah.
Is that the budget committee?
Yeah.
Oh, really, awesome. Now that back.
And moving on. Let us know, will you Nick?
I don't even know why they would have brought it up.
I don't understand, it just seemed like it went nowhere, like everybody knew it two months ago and why not call the advisory committee right off the bat?
And, get us.
I mean, I realize you guys haven't, the board hasn't met, right, since March, that's not right.
Yep, March. All right, but there is another one next month.
I think I may have read that.
Maybe. On the Kichigami or the library? It had, had to be the local library or regional, that's what we were just talking about.
What do we have to do with our money?
Well, I included a fact sheet I got from the treasury in your packet.
Yeah, I saw that.
And it's still pretty big, extremely big still, I'm getting a little frustrated about this. I guess my biggest takeaway is, is the money's gonna come in June, the first half, and then the second half in twenty two. Um, again, expiration date is twenty four, December of twenty four.
Our amount again was.
I still don't have the final amount, but the last number I had for capital was like nine, around ninety three thousand, right? The last webinar I sat on from League of Minnesota Cities, I mean, it was an hour long webinar and forty five minutes of it was all Q and A.
Yeah, we all, I think we all watched that one.
Yeah.
We went, and all you heard was reading for guidance from the Treasury Department.
Yeah.
And if that's our guidance, then.
And at that point, that's when they announced some of the other, um, uh, American Rescue Plan programs that. Is being funded in addition to this, like. Everybody's heard about the child tax credit that you're gonna get in your checkbooks instead of on your taxes. Um, there's a Capital Projects Fund, there's a Homeowner Assistance Fund, that's been announced recently as well. The Emergency Rental Assistance Fund that was talked about a little bit more. There's some more SBA credit initiatives out there and more unemployment. But the actual program for the cities hasn't really been drilled down completely. I took away that the reporting will be there, it'll be annual for city governments, prior to that, it was monthly. So I'll still have to take a fairly good laundry list of where the money's to spend, once we've agreed where the money's gonna go. But I don't hear as many restrictions on the funding as we have with the CARES Act funding. I also don't hear a lot of detail about revenue replacement as it pertains to liquor funds. That hasn't really been answered by the treasury yet, and that was the big question mark I have in my mind is. And some of that revenue replacement have, you know, be put in there, again, we have to prove it, this funding. We can only start using it for reasons that started in. March of this year, we can't go all the way back.
When you say liquor funds, you mean loss of sales?
Yeah.
Or municipality?
Loss of funds, loss of revenue.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, um, I don't know if it's gonna be revenue replacement for utilities. It could be revenue replacement for other municipal entities, I don't know if that will include our recreational golf course or campground. I want some more guidance on that first before we start looking at some legitimate reasons to use funding.
Invest in water and sewer infrastructure.
That's kinda what I'm leaning towards, if, if all else fails, I think we should push on that.
And I agree with you, I mean, there's a lot of different things that I think we could use it for, and I'm wondering if any of the funding can be utilized for us later.
For the new facility and for.
I was.
You need a camera.
Yeah.
Sure, and sewers.
One of the things they said was.
Where'd you get the camera?
We're having it televised, but not.
Oh, okay.
You know, to get the.
Save, save a lot of money.
Well, a camera or, I mean, a, a small back trailer would be fantastic too.
Yeah, I wrote that down to water and sewer investments, like televising, cleaning, and then big construction projects, and I. And I imagine, as they're talking about infrastructure, they're probably talking about underground. I imagine this whole televising, you know. Replacing those, those pipes with that, that could be considered a big construction project. On a timeline standpoint, they did state that. As long as the construction project starts within the timeframe of the two years, we have that funding. If it doesn't finish before the expiration date is done, that's okay. So those are a couple of my thoughts right off the bat about infrastructure. But. Now, you, you don't have to prove or buy it, PPE or. Like we did last year. Paying for people that are outside, I mean, yes, there's, there's payroll. Yeah.
How much, how much more money we got on the water tower?
I couldn't answer that question.
Say, if ever can pay that off early.
That is one of the bigger bonds we have outstanding.
That's, that's, that's gonna be a bit.
That's gonna be a large one, and we, I mean, on the short term though, Jason, you know, we have the sixteen project with Summit Main and. Sewer section of that is gonna get paid off next year, cause we did that short term for five years instead of. We'll get out a little longer and the rest of them are being paid assessments already. I, I strongly suggest the city consider, if the facility goes forward up on industrial, that industrial boulevard gets improved on.
Oh, yeah, that's a money budget talk for next year's budget that is substantially increased.
Well, and this is something that that money might be able to, but because, you know, that. Those manholes, those areas are failing because of the traffic over there, and I would say that's gonna help us in the long run.
I'd say most of Oscar Avenue, you should just pull out.
Yeah.
We were just actually talking about that today, Chris and I, with that pavement on there, we're at the point now where.
Cars can't even drive down now.
It's shot, and if we get time, a little bit of money, I'm thinking that we're just gonna pull it and go back to gravel for now. Because we've been on it, I would assume all of you've been on Oscar, it's shot, it's terrible, it's totally shot. Cause it was never designed for.
That high flow.
Lots of delivery trucks on it, those big garbage trucks. It's never designed for that, it was supposed to, it was a head end, it was a. Yep. Here's where town pretty much was.
Yeah, but that would.
That's it.
That's right.
We get a lot of. And when they reconnect, when they actually connected it to the. If Dollar General truck comes around that way, the school bus goes back there, place management's back there, the delivery trucks for seventy one restaurant. They're cranking in there, it's just.
Could we put a weight restriction on that road?
I mean, once we go back to gravel, honestly, gravel's gonna be better than what's there.
That's.
Yeah, and there, you guys saw it this spring, there was absolutely nothing I could do with it, other than brush some cones on it. That was, that was unfortunately the best thing I could do over there. Turn it back to gravel and I can at least blade it and I can put those rocks in it, put gravel in it, do whatever I gotta do with it. Usable. No, I'm with you, I think at some point this summer, when, it'd probably be more of a late summer, early fall project, you know, when you've got a little more time on your hands. But we don't have a. Yep.
And that'll cause, or not cause, but that'll eliminate most of the frost boils.
Well, it won't eliminate them. What it'll do is make them manageable for me, cause with the asphalt being on there, I just can't do anything.
Right.
Whereas if it's gravel, you know, okay, we get a nasty frost boil, I can fill it with rock, I can fill it with, you know, more gravel, anything. To get it to set up and to at least be somewhat drivable.
Right.
Whereas the way it is now, when it raises the way it does and it breaks everything apart, I can't do anything. The best thing I can do is go over there, take the hole, and try to smash it back together.
Right.
And that's it.
Okay.
Sounds great, I know. Where it is.
When, Jason, when you were talking about the water tower and you're talking about that, using that to pay that back, well. The revenues we have for the water and sewer budgets now, for operations and maintenance, pay for those bonds, that doesn't come out of property taxes?
Okay, I was just reading as the clause is drinkable water.
True, but on a project itself, not, I, I read where you can't use the funding to decrease the tax, the property taxes on your residents.
So it has to be improvements.
It has to be their new improvements, you can't like take it and pay a bond back.
All right, so we could technically fix the ponds, the three pond systems and all that.
Yeah, like, like if, if the irrigator is needed to be completely replaced, that would be a useful reason for it. Or if the pond, you wanted to put a big meter on that one, so we knew how much we were pumping out to the irrigation fields, that would be a useful reason for it. Anything else like your lift stations, if they needed to be completely replaced instead of overhauled, that would be a useful infrastructure improvement.
That makes sense.
But on a bonding or a current debt on those funds, you wouldn't want to use that really for. I read somewhere in here where, um, if the funds provided have been used to offset tax cuts, they love used for this purpose, they'll be paid back to the treasury. So you, we really wanna be careful with the language on how we're using it and what we're being paid for. I mean, the, the bonds are, the, the cost we get of the bonds for our revenue water and sewer help offset. The bond payments and it comes directly from our base fees, but. We're thinking operation and maintenance, how are we going to keep our, keep or maintain or even lower in some cases our costs to our, our customers in the long run? And if this money can assist in making your lift stations work better, so we don't have as much manpower having to fix it, then that would be a useful reason. And that's just. An idea.
Right, not to bring up a sore subject, but where are we on that cycle, is it two years for cleaning and maintenance on that?
On the lift stations.
On the water tower.
Um, we did, I think it was a four year.
Four year.
I wanna say it was eighteen, we did the outside and then next year we'd be doing the inside, that's all right.
Not necessarily, depending on. The look of it, I would have to pull everything up as it was done before I came. Generally with like inside. I can't remember who had the contract at that time, but if I can find that and pull that up. You know, they can give you a pretty good overview, they send a little dive machine in and the video, everything and stuff, and also they're able to. Really record and tell you that. really record and tell you that, hey, you know, you can probably stretch this out. In fact, I had a, a conversation with the company a long ago here about water tower. Of actually being able to stretch that out further. A lot of these companies are saying, yep, X amount of years is when you need to do it. Well, not every city's the same, how much water is coming through, how news the tower and all that, so. I'm guessing we have a good bit of time on the inside cleanup before it even needs to be done. As far as outside, I mean, if you're looking clean and paint the tower, you're gonna be probably around that two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar mark. By the time it's all said and done, we all know what the mush looks like, so.
Probably didn't nineteen, eighteen. Zero before you got.
Yep.
Well, it was also, you know, a bit of construction going on.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
When the tower, tower sweats and then the dust just sucked right through it.
That's true, the road construction was. And they're done with the scenic, so they shouldn't be anywhere close to us this year until they rip up seventy-two, or excuse me, seventy-one, which is twenty-three. Um, I, I mean, going back to that American Rescue Plan, I, I will keep sending you guys as much treasury information as I have, but until that money truly gets here, obviously, we're gonna make some really good choices before we spend any of it. It'll be in the market fund. Ready for us to decide where it needs to go. And I'll notify you guys.
Okay.
Didn't they, I, I was reading all this stuff earlier. Didn't I read something about, do, do we still have lead pipes going into some of the houses?
In our, in our city?
Yes.
Right?
I don't believe so. How did I know of? If, if there are, they're unmapped. And I'm not aware of them.
No, I was just wondering.
And beyond that, that'd be the homeowners' pipe. We own the main, not what the, we own our main, they tap into our main, everything from that tap to their house.
Hey, that's what, that's what I was wondering, if we still have, cause I know on the rescue, in this thing here, it said if there was any, if you, you read it.
Yep.
If there was any lead pipe that, that was part of the rescue plan, then it was gonna get paid for.
Yeah, none of our mains are lead.
No, no, no. But that, they were trying to eliminate the whole lead pipe.
Yeah, because there's still places in Michigan that are still not finished and they've never, and they've barely scratched the surface on updating it. So I imagine that's, I use, some places will definitely do that. And I think that's why they put that in this plan, was to provide the funding for that type of the use. Cause in the CARES funding, it wasn't. Oh, in the CARES funding, it was directly related to a pandemic. On the basis of mitigating or responding to the health emergency, had to have some record of it. Some way, shape or form, the CARES funding had to circle back to that reason. Whether it was, you know, the liquor store needed or to-go containers and that type of stuff, because they couldn't have the bar open, but they were still serving food. Those types of small things that they would have normally have had, but increased their usage. But it was coded to that CARES funding, having people sick out that were staffed. That was coded to that funding, things like that. But this funding's different.
Yeah, well, I could understand that, this was, but this was different, this, I mean, from this one here.
Absolutely, yes, to your question, if someone does have lead pipes, they could, I guess, apply for. Ask the city.
Yep, I mean, if the city put together some type of grant for a homeowner that needed to have it replaced, yes, that money would be earmarked for that.
That would be quick.
Yeah.
Then we'll come back to this again, too, cause it's also part of the housing.
Okay.
Again. Well, if nobody else has anything else on that, we'll move on to the really fun stuff. Our appointments and designations. Again.
So we need to put Dawn on a few of these.
Dawn, did you have a chance to look them over?
I was looking at this stuff.
Have any?
They're all full.
Well, they're full because we needed them to be full, but now you're here, so we can kick someone off and put somebody else on. What is that? Any questions about any of the committees before you? Yes.
I know. How do the department heads like to be on multiple board or multiple committees?
Oh, we like to.
How, how, how do you like it? Do you guys still feel that you're obligated to sit on the board since now we're on a full five council again?
Ooh, I'll, I'll go where I'm needed.
Well, that's what I'm asking, this is, we don't necessarily need you guys to be on, well, you know, more than the managers that are needed for the responsibility.
Sure.
But I'm asking, do you guys still want that responsibility?
Not, I don't need it. But I'm here, if you want us here, if you want us here, I can't speak on everybody, but I'll be there if you want me to.
That was the answer I was supposed to duck out of the committee or two.
I'm not on, I don't think I'm on too many, so.
Right.
I'm on a lot.
Yeah.
Right, that was another.
I.
I'm on a lot.
I think going back to what Jason was saying is in these, in these assignments where it would say other, it could be a second council. Doesn't have to be a staff member.
Right, so personally, I, I'm fine with the ones I'm on. Being as, I am kinda in the everything, my party.
I'm kinda hoping you guys are willing to stay on the personnel committee, because that kind of affects all of you guys.
Absolutely, there.
I'm just saying, you know, like the.
And the recommendations of the personnel committee.
Yeah. I mean, like the liquor committee, do you really wanna be on that?
You can take me off the liquor committee, I really don't.
I kinda figured.
Liquor committee. Peel me off that one.
There's Dawn's first job.
What else you got that I'm on?
I'm looking, I'm looking.
You wanna go on the finance committee?
Like, uh, we can pull Shonda.
I actually don't mind being on the finance committee, with how many departments I have.
We can pull Shonda off the public works committee.
That would be a good idea.
Quite a few eggs in their basket this summer. I'm gonna have a vacancy on the golf board. I know Lauren Shazer and her husband are moving, but typically we have two golf board members, so I'm gonna just tell you guys there's gonna be a vacancy unless we I find somebody to fill it before our meeting.
Put Jason on. We like to.
Golf board.
And Adams vote.
I'll be more than happy to. Yeah, I know. I'm, I'm broadening my horizon.
You and me on the golf board.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'm going to them meetings. Can I take myself off that one?
Well, you're supposed to be taking notes on all of them anyways.
I know.
Somebody's gonna spot these if.
Y'all have ideas.
I know I need to add Dawn.
We are, that is, we're next.
Hey, so where am I going?
Oh, hang tight, we're not done with you yet. Oh, yeah, don't worry. Don't, don't worry.
As Jason said here last meeting, don't say no. The more you say no, the more they add.
I think it was on seven at one point.
I've really been on a whole lot.
Mike, you're on a lot.
Well, I have that we added Dawn to two committees. Public Works. Do you wanna, Max, do you wanna come off the public safety and put Dawn on there instead?
No, it's fine, I don't know how many you're on.
Uh, almost.
What?
I'm kidding. Actually, he's not, I have one.
Well, I mean, I sit in on the.
I know.
I'm two.
Yeah, I mean.
I sit in on the planning. I don't get to be a vote on the plan. I like to keep an eye on them.
And you have to be on the joint powers for the ambulance, so that's not the backup, it's just position. Actually, I thought we had you guys spread out pretty good. I mean, if we put Dawn, if Dawn's okay with public works liquor and obviously on the HRA, that's still spread by anybody. I don't know if Sheldon really got a vote on him, we put him at time when we did this. Was he around when you guys did this?
Yeah, he was.
Okay, good. I only see him on a couple.
Okay, yeah, we all were on here.
Okay.
Only if there were many of us at that time.
I know.
I don't think so. Fill that in and fill that in.
Three of us.
I think we really wanted to.
Cause you guys were gonna actually put me on committees.
Mm-hmm.
We were, yeah. And I thought you went.
So when you have the number behind the name, is that how many are recommended?
Yeah, that's how many we've always had on the committee. Well, yes, and the first, like, okay, so for instance, personnel committees have less than, has, has had three always minimum. That doesn't mean we don't, we can't have more, but the number that I have on there has always been the minimum. I had to do that, so I wouldn't, yeah. In some cases, smaller committees work much better depending on that committee.
Okay, I'm straight.
I might as well just bring it to the council.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, so I'm, I'm confused. Under the golf board, it says golf course manager. Every meeting we have, it says golf superintendent.
It should say superintendent.
Okay.
You're right. Under camera.
Correct.
That's the job title.
Correct.
Yeah, I have course manager.
Right, I know, but.
We call him superintendent, so.
Just trying to stay.
We call him.
I'm still on public safety. We don't meet that often.
No. Only when we have, you know, a Jane break.
That one's in the minutes.
Mike, he's making, you know, kill Christine after the meeting.
Jake breaks?
Oh, you missed it.
I did.
Oh.
Yeah.
Let's circle back, we covered it before.
It was before they convened, he just had a quick question.
I'll give you a chance at the end.
Thank you.
Just circle back on this resolution there, Mr. Mayor, and see if you wanna be done or not.
Kinda curious.
So where is, you're pretty well, you got that?
I think so, so the, the changes I'm making is on the public works committee, I'm removing Shonda and adding Dawn. And the liquor committee, I'm removing Mike and adding Dawn. On the golf board, I am changing Jim's position, so it stays superintendent. I am removing Lauren, Lauren and Shazer. It's nice to have a female and a male. I, I have you on, have Jason on there in addition to.
I can be feminine for a little bit.
And then on the HRA, obviously, it'll be the full council, so Dawn will be added to that listing. And that is the changes I have listed.
I'm good with you, Dawn.
Yeah.
Sound good?
Three, yeah.
Okay.
If I may ask Nick, or if anyone else knows, has the local library board changed its names on this, this year? Cause I know that that kind of moved around a little bit. Mary, Miriam, Katie.
Package. Yep, no, that's all.
No, that'll just be on the package. Okay, so nothing's changed on there. Okay, then I will make these revisions. For June tenth.
Sounds great.
Okay.
I like to print out a new copy.
Highlight it.
Good idea.
That's what I do.
I totally forgot I was on one of the boards. So committees.
So when we need to meet, I'm your liaison. I will reach out and try to schedule, cause a lot of them don't meet on a routine basis. They meet as needed.
Right.
So if I can call a meeting and get everybody's schedules together, and that's how we call that meeting.
Great.
And so if you can't do Tuesday, but you can do Wednesday and everybody else is okay with Wednesday, we'll do Wednesday.
Oh, perfect.
Something like that.
All right.
Okay.
All right.
That's where I've heard my one hell of a handle.
So. Yeah.
Cause I can never remember.
Okay.
All right, onward. At the last planning commission, I know, the.
BDC.
BDC meeting. Acronyms.
Development Board.
Yep, at the last development board meeting, it was strongly suggested that we revive the HRA.
Revive?
Well, it's been kinda.
Burnt.
Burnt.
Correct.
It's a good word. Hibernating. Hasn't been doing anything. And we need to concentrate a little of some, put some effort into housing, Blackbaud.
As in how to bring people in or?
As in how to get houses built.
Well, it could also leave some revitalization to it.
Yep.
So we're going back to a light issue?
Not necessarily, it could be a little bit of both.
So will you like an annexing issue?
That.
That's a possibility.
Fall under, I mean, the HRA would be a great place to start that kind of conversation.
Because I don't think we have any land to sell.
Well.
Or donate to a contractor to build.
There's a few. But we, at the last meeting, there was a, of the BDC, we talked about finding different properties in town. And they've marked off a couple of them that are good candidates to put a house on. And we're up for funding from.
So the HRDC.
HRDC.
Plans in twenty-two, they want to build two homes, two single-family homes in Blackbaud in twenty-two. This year, they're focusing their financial efforts into park records. And in order to you know, start that process, they've been speaking with Grant Frenzel, who's on the development board, but he also sits on the board at the, at the HRDC to find and locate and secure or acquire properties within side the city limits that have infrastructure or can have infrastructure to our mains, cause that's their preferred location. And secure that property so that they can.
So when you say access, then you will put the lines up to the house?
Yep, they will build the house and let the lines in, so.
HRDC is headwaters.
Regional development centers, so they're the ones that started the process and built the two homes over by Dollar General. And the new one that's built down on, up on Fourth Street in the east, which is the end. Um, and that's what they do, they'll have, they'll, they'll help finance it, they'll help get first-time home buyers into the property. If they need to, they'll reach out to Greater Minnesota Housing to look for some gap financing if the comps don't meet the property values and how much it costs to build that home. But what they're always looking for is viable pieces of property, like I said, that are hooked up to infrastructure, have access to. So in the past few years, the development course and kind of that finance year, if you will, they've been like, well, we'll buy that property and then we'll give it to the HRDC. That helps. That helps meet that gap. They did that for all three of these homes. Um, and at the last development board meeting, one of the people, one of the members said, you know, I feel like this should be a city thing.
Yeah.
And.
And absolutely right.
They're absolutely right. And, you know, there is a housing, there is an HRA housing fund inside our cities um, funds that is only for HRA funding. It's been, like I said, dormant for several years since before I came and is sitting there with like $5,000. And I don't know when that money sat there.
Only $5,000?
Yep. I don't even know what it's from. If it's from a land sale or something else, I, I don't know what it was from. But HRAs have.
You look on the map, we, we, the HRA does have a couple little chunks of property here and there throughout town.
Own.
Does it come up as HRA or?
It does.
Comes up as like the G R A.
Okay. I'll look at that.
So that, the properties that the development board members have been discussing um, to date include a piece of property on between Third Street Southeast and Railroad right at the end. Right on Railroad.
Yeah.
Across from the lumber building. Um, a couple.
Is that that $8,000 chunk there?
I think I would.
Looks like a little diamond.
No, but that one's available too, Jason. I think it'd be better if I point it out.
It'd be the northwest corner of the intersection.
The first one is like right here, behind the Third Street, and then this little tiny corner that you're talking about that abuts the.
Right.
The trail, that one too. But I always thought the folks that owned the property just north of that were always been looking at it. It's such a small piece of property and don't think you could get a house on it.
So you see, you're saying across from the lumber or the mill?
Yep.
The one where they just built that flatland?
Not the mill, Northland Timber, Railroad, not the mill.
Okay.
Yep. Go back to Railroad, where you have. On Heather Chucky and her husband own the property across from the, uh, the Bowley Alley at the corner of Oscar and Summit. Granted, that piece of property is technically um, business district. It's, you know, kind of right on the corner. It could become, it could be rezoned.
Right.
Um, the property up here at the end of Liberty, that's a big chunk, and that could also be purchased as well. Um, you could probably put three homes on there. The only problem with that one is there's two. I think there's two water and sewer connections off of Liberty on that road. It's.
Into that property?
Into that property where the garage is.
It's just one.
It's just one. But behind it, there's more. The problem is, and that is our mains and right at Liberty and Main Street. So our mains don't extend up. And the mains would have to come off underneath the walking trail. Unless this got, like, completely redone and we stemmed in another.
Could come in right off of Liberty.
Left Liberty. So there's, there is possibilities of lingual homes in the area. It's just, you know, acquisition of property has always been a challenge for some.
And that's where the HRA can kind of step in, where we can figure out, how do we get funding?
And when a city has an HRA, they can apply for funding from the, from deed differently than getting funding that we need as a city to, do its regular general fund. It kind of works a little bit like a business, but it's allowed to statutorily. I want to be able to, I've always wanted to be able to dabble into this and find out more about it.
So, once we do revitalize or revive the HRA, is that it could be another task for you to?
It's already on my job description.
So that's where my thought on job descriptions.
Yeah, we would definitely have to revise some job descriptions.
So that Christina has time.
Lot more time.
To do what I think maybe better suited.
Yeah, I mean, try to minimize your most taxing jobs. And push them off on other departments. Push off, delegate.
Delegate them out.
Get them off your, your desk.
Nope. I think.
Department heads could report to the council.
That would be a nice thing.
Well. Yes.
We would get more emails. And we might actually have them show up to our meetings for a change.
I would just tread very lightly with that, and this is out of no disrespect to what we did between Jason's job description and mine. But when the council starts considering changing the direct responsibility or direct authority, you start eliminating almost my role. So there's three different ways you can have a clerk in a city. You can have a city manager, which is typically only in a much larger city. You can have a finance director. You can have a clerk treasurer. You can have a deputy clerk. A city administrator statutorily isn't necessary unless the city wants to eliminate the administrative and the human resource portion away from the board's role responsibility.
Would it you still be in charge of the city's employees as an HR aspect?
If you remove?
See, we, then we would just have them come talk to us about their concerns and all the other stuff. And then if they still have a personality issue, I mean, that's, that would still fall on your description.
I agree with what you're talking about. My only conflict with it is if it's financial and my responsibility to the city. And one of my roles is I'm the judiciary responsible authority answering to the council. If I don't know what you're, they're talking to you about, I have no say in it. I have absolutely no idea what's going on. Will you guys tell me?
Well, I mean, technically, we wouldn't know until we have our work sessions and we bring it to. Because that's when most of the stuff would be coming out, because they could report to us. I don't know, I'm just spitballing ideas. I don't know. I mean, um, and for your financial, I mean, right in our own city ordinance, it says that our deputy, our city clerk, or I'm sorry, Paige's role deputy clerk is supposed to be our city treasurer as well. So I mean, I think you're holding on way too many responsibilities that there is. So I mean, I, I feel that we could, like, go.
I don't think you have the right person right now to be in the role that you're assuming that that is elaborating because the way I read that, that means your deputy clerk takes care of your budgets.
That's how long do we get to?
And that just has not happened in 10 years.
Well, I know, but I'm just saying, that's our city ordinance.
Right.
Has that been revised before?
Not since I started.
So technically, Paige should not have been hired, would be underqualified. Uh, that's just how long do we get?
Sure. So job, what you're, what I think you're telling me is your job descriptions in the city have been revised without the ordinance being revised.
That's what I'm hoping for. Right. Yeah, that's definitely what I'm hoping for, because otherwise our, our ordinances are way out of date. Open for way out of date. Otherwise, uh, because it's supposed to be, I'm assuming it was like, um, when you guys updated Jim's position, went through the, uh, the golf board. Yeah, yeah. And then you got finalized by the council.
Yeah.
What's the end result here? What are we looking at?
Uh, I know it's gonna be a lot of work, but we're gonna have to figure out what's what on the job descriptions. And see if, uh, where the actual job descriptions lie and see what we can take on Christina's workload.
Are you talking everybody revision? Or looking at?
I would like to, but, you know, cases.
I think I think it would solve a lot if we clarified the city administrator and the deputy clerk's positions more.
Okay.
Because the title and the, just, and the job duties don't match.
Hmm.
All right. I mean, because.
Based on the ordinance.
Well, I don't even, we can make the ordinance say what we need it to say, but which way do you want it to go?
Well, I'm trying to find out what you guys want to take away from, what, what to take off my plate.
We, we're just trying to get you the help. I mean, we can't hire personnel, so.
Right.
We're just trying to, like I said, lighten your load so you can do other jobs.
Oh, I could, Jason answers to the city council. Fine. But does that say that in your job description right now?
Yes. Then I answer the city council.
No, that, oh, Jason answers to us.
Jason answers.
Oh, to you.
To you, in your job description.
Well, you guys haven't even tried it. I mailed them to you.
Uh huh.
We know.
I don't know if I heard.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll put it out there.
So that I don't know, I think we have a fairly competent bunch of department heads. So if they're, Mike's in charge of his budget, Jason has his budget. Dawn has got her budget.
Which they already do. Right?
Well, I mean, you don't have to okay purchases or that stuff. They, they gotta come.
Yeah. They already do that. Nothing's changed from that. That's how it's always been. If anything, when those budgets are set and worked together on, that's what I'm mostly involved with. But once they're set, then they manage their own budgets. I just report to everyone else to where those budgets are at every month or quarter or whatever it needs to be.
Good.
So there's, there's probably a duty here that I might be calling something different than you guys are. Of what I do versus what you might see it as.
Or you're the supervisor for everyone?
Yes.
How much time is that?
As much as you think. I don't know. I don't feel like it does. Unless, uh, a little breaks loose on something.
Are you complaining? She, are, are you, are you complaining a lot all over?
No, Christina doesn't normally complain.
That's why I've never.
Well, not.
No, no.
But the point is, if we want to revive the HRA.
Yeah.
We're going through these job descriptions. We want to do more with grants, and we want to do more with, that's more her.
Oh, a lot.
Lot of time.
A lot. Right. We're trying to take away another chunk of her time to allow her to do another part of the job.
I think that's what we're trying to do.
But, yeah, but once, let her start gets going, right? That's gonna be a big chunk off of it. Correct? Because she's already done all the footwork. Get it going.
Are you just talking about the project, Dawn?
Yeah, the project.
No, because financially, I will be the one that is in charge of making sure everybody gets paid.
Well, I, I mean.
Yeah, I'm not giving that to a deputy clerk.
No, but that was a lot of work to get that going. I mean, all the paperwork and all the.
Yep.
Good. Okay. Then you have the, uh, public works building. You got all that, all the footwork to get all that done. So now you're just kind of like floating in the air on that one.
Yep.
So, you know, so that, that's a big project. Now you have the buildings that are, you're kind of floating in the air on that way to see what happens. You got a lot to talk to. You know, and I could see this, but, you know, so if she starts another project, still have all the other ones going on, but I mean, I'm not saying give her more work to work, work her to death or anything, but I mean, she gave them all of doing it all. We look at her, she, she's not like saying, I can't do this. No reality.
I would never tell you that.
Oh.
See?
I would never tell you that.
Why? You want me out on my own? I'll go out on my own and report to you if you want. I absolutely.
I would, I, I don't want you to speak for Shonda, but how would you feel? If you came to the council versus Christina and the council?
Well, pretty much I already do just come to the council. I mean, there's a few things that we, there's little smaller things that we need to take care of that we go through with Christina about, but.
What are you worried about?
Right, um, I guess the question I should be asking is, is do you feel more comfortable for Christina talking about the pond, or do you feel more comfortable than you addressing the pond issue? Same thing with you. Do you feel like you should be up talking to us about the pond or being like triggered to us about the pond?
You know, I mean, as.
Maintenance, sorry, all the words.
Yeah, I know, I followed you. I followed. You're talking about me bringing everything from my departments directly to council, correct? I have no problem with that. I think, I think Christina and I work well together, and I think that we would continue to work well together if that's what you guys are wanting to do. I'm in full support of that. That's kind of what I think I was hired to do, was run my department.
I was thinking that, you know, the grant, my point was like grant writing, stuff like that. That's tightens me. And it's not only tight, it's expensive.
Correct. When we have other folks doing it.
Well, and I follow you, I follow you, and in some cases, depending on what type of grants you're looking to write, there's times for those throughout the year. Some of, a lot of them are in the fall. Not many of them are in the spring. And that's because where you get these grants, they work on a biannual financial budget, not an annual budget like we do. So you're, all the state, all the DNR, all of those grants, you are open up in October and June, November, December 1 for the following year, because in June of that same year before it opened up, that's when they get all their money.
How many here do that? Oh. See what I'm saying?
So i- if, if I can, if I understand correctly, basically, you would be looking for me to completely run everything that's underneath.
Correct.
Christina would step aside from it. Anything that came in to here in regards to any of my stuff.
Correct.
Whether it be sewer water, parks, streets, any of that would just be passed along to me.
Correct.
I would deal with it or work with Christina on, on things.
If you had questions, correct.
With stuff.
Anything that came up related towards public works would be solely your decision.
I, like I said, I'm fine with that. It's what I kind of originally thought I was hired. That's what I thought I was hired for originally, was to run my departments and then originally, that's what I'm used to, is coming to council. Granted, I come to you now, but Christina is my boss.
Right.
But if you're looking to lighten her load and put more onto me, I'm fine with it. Good with that, actually.
Uh, if I have one more question. Jason, have you found it any easier?
Nothing really changed for me.
Kind of what I was leaning.
It took somebody.
So much difference.
It took some responsibility, I think. Moved it around and if my department has a problem, I should be the one facing the consequences of my department. Right, so I mean, and not Christina. And how it was set up, it would have been Christina. So for, we're law enforcement staff, especially. I don't know if it lightened the loads, but.
But it just shifted.
It shifted that and, and it's one less thing I have to maybe think about, I mean, about, you know, how is this project going? Or, you know, something that's going on, because, I don't know. It worked fine for me or us, I think.
Look back to the original, we'll table that for right now. The job description part of this conversation. Another time.
I can get some samples from some other cities of our size that have actually administrators, if you guys want to see how it varies.
How it's worded, how it's.
I mean, there's so many different levels of responsibility depending on the size of the town. Or a lot of them, a lot of the cities, my role is, is called a. A lot of them, a lot of the cities, my role is, is called a clerk. Not an administrator. And the way I understand it, an administrator isn't statutorily necessary, but what I've stated in the past, it just removes. The human resource responsibility and the hiring, firing from the board. Like. You would all have to say, yes, Melissa, you can hire a part-time person for ten oh eight.
They already do that though.
But you guys would be the one that's saying, okay, now we can send them to a drug test instead of me.
And we'd have to come to you.
You would be the ones that they have to go to for that.
Well, see, and, and that's, that's where I get, I'm, I'm confused because they already have full control of who they wanna hire and fire. And it's just this, uh, a policy of the cities.
Right.
I mean, we don't really say you're gonna go be a drug tester, that's our city's policy.
It is, but without the administrator, without an administrator, so let's just, I guess the best example I could say is the city of Castle Lake. They have a clerk treasurer. That's it. And they have an assistant clerk, not a deputy clerk that helps that personnel part-time. She's a contracted employee, she's not an at-well employee. She has no say in who the city hires for any of the entities at all. All she does is the paperwork. So if they had a liquor store manager and they wanted to hire five part-time employees. Liquor store manager would go to the council and say, these are the five people I wanna hire. And the council would approve them then, instead of. The liquor store working through another person, and then that person saying, these are the people we hired. They all passed the drug test, they all qualify, we are telling you we hired these people. The board would have the yes or no.
So it could be like, they need help tomorrow, but they're not gonna be able to tell them that.
Right, right, cause they'd have to come in front of the council and I, and.
But unless the department has had the ability to do that.
That's what I'm saying, which they already do.
Here.
Yes.
But I'm using Castle Lake as the comparison.
Okay.
They don't.
Okay.
Okay.
So we'd have to be very careful how we.
And I've spoken to some council members in the past five years of this particular city. Who asked me for my role and what I do and how I help those departments. Because a couple of their board members at the time really wanted their clerk treasurer to have that responsibility. But she did not. Because the council didn't want that responsibility anymore for the same, for the simple reason that it slowed it down. Hiring process, I mean.
Right, and that's worse for cities that are not us. I can't fight it anymore.
Not that this has much to do with my department, my two cents are, I think. Removing some, you know, allevi- alleviating some duties for Christina. I would like that if you guys could do it for me. I mean, I mean, you know what I mean? It would be a good thing, but I do think. On the H R side of things, the helping when we need it, which should be, I would love to see saying on the job description. A department head needs help with the H R side, that we work with her to do it. I would hate to see that go away personally.
Cause it's tough if you've got five different people that you've gotta try and can talk to.
And schedule the joint screenings and she keeps good files and I, I don't, I, I'd like. I would, I, I use her for that right now, I'd hate to lose her for that.
Yeah.
I'll pass. Should we drug test the council? I pass.
Why are you guys looking at me?
Uh, are you just kidding me?
No, I was just looking at my foot, I just happened to kick you.
No, I, I think we oughta, we oughta pass that. All, all city employees? I mean, you can't just restrict some of them.
Huh?
I said I would vote you in all.
I mean, we're, yeah, you know.
Yeah, I mean.
Something to think about, guys.
All city employees? So where are we on this housing thing?
That's where we're at.
Yeah, we're just, we're just trying to make sure if we do adopt it, that you have enough time to give it.
As you said, he wanted to dabble. I wanna succeed.
I wanna succeed too, but here's the thing, I want the whole town to succeed, and if that means, like Don says. Right now, we're working with some really big projects. Some other stuff just has to hold back a little bit. Or we start delegating some of that responsibility to someone other than myself.
Well, see, right now, we've got a full council and we're ready to pour right through it.
Right.
So you're saying that, don't get me wrong, you're saying that Paige isn't the person who gives them. Some of the stuff too?
She's been with me eight months, she's not ready yet.
Okay, but. She used to be a customer. Who's mayor? And, and, and don't get me wrong, I, you know, that has probably nothing to do with it. I know eight months is not a long time to be under the toe of somebody, you know? But who?
Who is that person?
Yeah, see, you don't have that person.
Not yet. And that, that job that Paige is sitting in right now is, is extremely important. There's a lot of meticulous stuff that she has to master, and she's, she has not been, she hasn't experienced it all yet. She hasn't even been here a year.
Yeah.
And I've seen it, I can do it with my eyes closed, done it for eight years, both sides of it. She hasn't, we have. Eighty, a hundred people coming to the campground, starting on Thursday. It's gonna be a, a flipping zoo here. Getting all those campers organized and paid for and who's in what campground, and I already wonder, it's gonna be. The most. Overwhelming situation ever because of the family that's here. It takes some very. Um, skilled customer service to help with those folks, but that's just one element of that face of that job.
Mark's guy.
You're gonna take all the payments?
I don't really wanna take the reservation.
That's what I'm saying. You're not gonna take the payments in the park.
That's, that's what the clerk is for.
That's what the clerk is for. So I'm.
If there are que- if there's questions on the park or anything like that, and that.
Can be full?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. One hundred percent full every memorial we.
Oh, I've got rules right now.
No. I have turned down like fifteen people in four days.
When's the last time we raised the rates?
Last year, the rest of them, yes. You know exactly where I'm going. So with the H R A, I, I do feel it's something that.
Yeah. It's been on my to-do list for a while.
Doesn't need more apartment buildings, we need single-family homes.
I don't, two places are, three places are right now.
And we need, uh, some blinds. One blind.
Them films did not work.
Where we, you know, we could work on annexing.
I, I wanna do that too.
I want, I'd love to see our friends out there.
So if we do annex, we have to run water and sewer lines?
Not always.
But that would be an incentive.
It would be a right, it would be a, eventually. Depending on where you were to, where you were to annex and how profitable it could be to us. But I mean, it's really time to start thinking about it, cause.
Yeah, we need to, of course.
Yeah, we, we need a bike path out to the border.
There we go.
We fix our bike path.
Well, there's no bike path out there.
We got one that needs a lot of annex already.
Needs to be farmed and redone.
So.
So, yeah, uh, definitely needs to start, so how do we revise the H R A? Make a video and set a date and start talking about it?
I think there's a really good memo on the meetings of cities. Read it up and I'll meet at the next work session and carve out some time to go through it. Cause it, I'd be starting from scratch on this too, you guys.
Right.
So every, yeah, cause like I said, revive, I mean, just like Frankenstein on the table.
Yeah, we gotta figure out what our authority is and what we can and cannot do.
I know that there will be, um. Use from our city attorney. I think that's probably one of the reasons I've been thinking about this in the past, is our previous council has not, legal council hasn't been. As involved as our current co- legal council has, so that would be helpful to have.
All for it, let's do it.
Next work session.
Yeah, everybody can read up on. Give some more.
No, we'll give you guys some more.
Rome wasn't built today. Give me a week. Give me a week and a half and give my grandson a bomb to do.
There you go. Give him a bang of it.
Anything else on that, guys? Otherwise, I'm gonna do this, uh, proclamation here.
And we can do that at a work session too?
You can do it anytime you want.
Proclamations are fun. My daughter graduates this year.
Oh. There's a reason.
Oh, well.
You want me to send that to, like.
You got the photo of your last one?
Talking about the.
I think we should send this to, uh. Should send it to the school and give it a copy to John.
When was the last?
Oh, okay.
When was the last time they had a hundred percent?
Never. I, I don't think it's really been a. Everybody's been striving for it for years.
We, we try, and we try, and we try, and we're not gonna quit trying.
I hope not, but yeah, that's great if this has been a long time.
I mean, Black Duck's graduation rate was like he said, about eighty-five percent, which is still better than. But still, we can do better. That are currently in school, see, that's the other thing.
I thought Black Duck hit a hundred percent this year.
Oh, we're trying. You have children, you had kids that dropped out.
Because of. Just drop out.
I'm thinking, yeah, other reasons.
Oh, it's too down.
You know? They all don't, they all don't make it, or there's no incentive to make it, there's no.
Do they have, like, I'm not used to the small town stuff, like in larger cities, they would have like night school, make up for that. Since for the summer and as long as you make up your credit to graduate that year, do they have an incentive like that up here?
Well, I mean, you could probably still make up, even if you don't get your diploma that night, you're still probably, you know. There's gonna be a few kids that have been.
Summer school?
Summer school, they're gonna.
I had to make up one, one semester credit.
That's it?
Graduate, yeah, and it took me three months of night school.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, one semester credit.
Why three months though? Was it just, we offered like a week, a day, a week?
A week, a week, uh, a day a week, yep. Yeah, and it was night classes at the local college.
Keep your kids in school.
Please.
Wow.
So many problems get solved with the beginning, as they talked about last time. You.
Okay.
As mayor of the city of Black Duck, Minnesota, I, Maxwell Glover, claim June fourth, twenty twenty-one, one hundred percent graduation day in the city of Black Duck. Whereas the city council of the city of Black Duck, Minnesota, has determined that a goal of one hundred percent graduation rate is beneficial to all concerned. And whereas the city council of the city of Black Duck, Minnesota, will do whatever it can to encourage all of our youth to graduate from high school. And whereas the city council of the city of Black Duck, Minnesota, believe when we as a community. Relentlessly remind our young people how important it is to obtain their high school diploma, we can achieve our goal of one hundred percent graduation rate. Therefore, be resolved that the city council of the city of Black Duck, Minnesota salute the Black Duck. Two thousand twenty-one senior high school graduating class, thank all the citizens for participating in this initiative. Probably proclaim this twenty-fourth day of May.
Twenty twenty-one?
Very nice.
Yep.
Please do.
So can we circle back to the jake break? God, I forgot it too.
I did, I did, I did say I would give Jason a moment, but yes, he did have. You have a concern about jake breaks, sir.
It's not just me, it's, it's like I said, the, uh, the, the community that came up last time. You know, they asked a simple question, they thought out how much it was gonna cost.
Well, we voted it down.
Correct. But also we're talking about moving the speed limits, city limits. Possibly eliminating the entire jake break down the third and top down going zero.
Yes, you have a cop sitting there twenty-four seven, you're not.
No, that, that road is ridiculous for cities. But just because the prior council voted on it, new council can still vote on it. It's my understanding.
We can bring it up.
Cause I believe the numbers were three thousand dollars, Christine, is that correct? Was that first sign?
It was, it was like four to six hundred dollars to sign, and you needed one per side of the road. And you needed to have it on the way in and on the way out.
Yes.
And then I think what, like, we were talking before you came, a, a large portion of it too was the fact that, I mean, we can only do it at the city limit.
Right.
And with how small our city limit is, when you're coming in, they can be hammering on right to the city limit sign, pop off it. Then there's nothing Jace could do, you know, it was.
You can't, the signs, you have to be so far spaced out when you start slowing them down on state highways.
Okay.
You can't just go from sixty to thirty, you have to space them out and you have to give forwarding and stuff, so. Unless you can somehow move city limits further, oh, you know, I don't see you getting that sound away from the concern there.
Yeah, it's just like, I know we've heard it on council, coming all the way up here to a dead stop with the jake break. I, I can hear daily going from. Forty-five mile an hour zone all the way down to zero.
That's what I brought up earlier, is they come. From the south and the north, you know, um, they're all tied to town, they're. Got the jake break rig on, and it's just like annoying as hell.
I know, and it's, it's against the law because it's meant to as an, uh, an emergency, you saw it. Uh, it's how the ordinance is wrote, it's meant for emergencies, you saw it.
No, it's a means to slow yourself down, not emergency, I don't believe.
I'll have to look at the state statute, I'm pretty sure.
If it is, all I'll say is if it is, I've been breaking the law for twenty years.
It's only meant for emergency, you saw it.
But if you got folks who wanna sign the petition, then bring it in.
Again?
More than happy to listen to you. I have no problem with that.
I gave up on it because you guys kind of like said no.
Right, and then I believe it was, uh, Mr. Klug was the one that tried to adjust the idea of moving the signs out. To our actual city limits, so by the time they hit the residential zones, there's supposed to be no more jake.
Didn't we address that though?
We were looking.
County and state, I thought, and they're the ones that get to kind of set that because their roads, even though they run through town, we don't have a say. On where they do that. They have all their analysis, you know, all their analytical numbers and everything, and they're, they're the ones that run. The speed limit signs and where you have to slow down and the setbacks, footage is and all that. But Don, on the other hand. Jason's correct, this is a different city council and was sitting here then. The other fact of the matter is, is that if you want that petition, the city could even. You can even try to get in behind it and send it to the county. Make them do something. Make them do something. I don't think any of us are saying that we don't want it or anything, I think we've all just. Have tried and exhausted our options and we're almost arguing amongst ourselves for something that none of us have any control of.
You know, it's like. If a guy would walk over and talk to each one of these, I know who they are, made me who they are. But you hated folks, you hate to go talk to them. You know, I mean, it's like. That's their right evidently. That's why I asked, that's why I started it out, is what, is there a noise ordinance in town, well, or outside of town, it's awful. That's why I brought it up for the meeting.
Okay, but maybe it's.
If this goes farther, maybe we could.
We're here. That's what we're here for, if people want it, if they want to talk about it, we'll talk about it.
Yeah. You can't, I mean. Max is right, this is a different council, and every time someone wants to bring it up, it shouldn't be addressed. In one way, shape or form, everybody has the right to address the council on that concern.
One hundred percent.
No, with a, with a big concern today that I brought up, so.
That's what we're here for, because. The folks that are here.
Yeah.
I have one last thing. For everybody, I guess, mostly Mike.
Oh boy.
At the last chamber meeting. What about our city sign that goes on the scenic?
Oh.
We took it down.
Took it down.
As per their request. I had one of my employees repaint it. It's, it's stored in my shed until I've heard otherwise. I can put it back up. But I, I had no idea they wanted it down, they were originally gonna redo it. I never heard anything on it, repainted it, just been sitting. So. Want it up? I can find some time, try to call, locate it, get it backed up. So. Honestly, I don't remember exactly where it was now, I didn't know what was that one.
I kind of do, but they scalloped out.
Well, they changed it so much.
More that probably want to double check with the county and make sure.
Yep.
That it's on their piece that they own, not that private piece to the south and then. Get it on the right. Because they were fine with it going back up. When they had requested.
Yeah.
It wasn't part of this, of the project scope given to mental illness when they did that section of, like, of the scenic.
Like you said, it was requested of me to take it down and I did. Never heard anything, it was gonna be rebuilt or redone at one point. I think with COVID and everything, it just kind of got lost in the shuffle. Like you said, I had it repainted on our end to just fix up what we had there. Make it a little back up. And with our, course hopefully. Courses are beginning to come back. This year. Be nice to have them. We can get it up.
Can I just circle back to one question that wasn't in the business?
Okay.
The long conversation about my job description was discussed kind of on a left.
Sure.
Side.
A left side of the HRA.
Does the board want me to? Re-look at my job description and its duties? Compared to. I don't know. What's written versus what's ordinance, which, what you believe it should be, I mean, is the council looking to revise my job description? What I'm asking. Is that something I need to? Bring to you guys as a separate consideration point?
Yes. There's something else too.
No, but I got a question. Oh, it's a good one. Uh, do we get fifty or more vendors to Woodcarvers?
I'm gonna miss it.
Oh, this, because when I talked to Amanda. I think it was Amanda, she said that we had to have fifty or more people. Otherwise, they wouldn't be able to hold Woodcarvers. Fifty or more. Sessions, people, interesting, I was just curious if we heard it, if we're still putting it on or not. So I'm assuming Backwoods is going.
Backwoods is going and I'm pretty sure Woodcarvers is also on. On, they're on track to go, I'm not a hundred percent sure, I haven't talked to Rob.
Yeah. You guys are still planning a party this year?
Yes, we are.
Band tent and all the good stuff?
Yes.
And Robbie is going ahead with his, his plans for Woodcarver. Call that over at the library meeting.
Sounds good. That's what I don't want, I don't want to lose Woodcarvers Festival, that's been here for. Yeah.
Is that on our side?
That's. Chamber of Commerce also decided to put money into our big site out on the highway. So you Black Duck sign.
Oh.
Maybe for some improvement.
The one on, on the seventy one.
Yep.
More flowers, lighting, colors.
Yep, pulling off the dead stuff, getting rid of the.
It's over.
Other one of those. Who owns it?
Keith does.
Not ours. Not city property.
No, it's on Forest Street property.
Forest Street.
Forest Street doesn't.
No, Keith does.
Yeah.
I seen someone out there today cleaning out the planters.
I think it was Keith.
It's probably Keith. I think it's kind of a, a pet project, so to speak, I think he really enjoys it, takes pride in what he does out there. Honestly, it's one less thing that. My department is doing, so I'm fully fine with this.
How's the hiring going for the month?
Still looking. We have one person, I think. That we've had. We've hired on recently. Can we go in today?
Oh, yes, yes, we can today.
And ours is hard, it's hurting really hard too, they just pushed a four dollar raise Monday through Friday.
What ours did?
On top of their two dollar raise. For seasonal, yeah.
I don't know how we can compete with that.
For seasonal help.
Yeah, seasonal, that's six dollars Monday through Friday, another two dollars for the weekends, so that's eight dollars an hour.
On top of what.
On top of their base rate.
What was their base, like twelve?
Four, I thought it was fourteen.
Really?
I thought it was fourteen and sixteen on the, on the weekends, like a two dollar differential.
Yeah.
I know.
And then when you have one of them. They have a merit or whatever, you want like two hundred and five dollars an hour? It's getting ridiculous. Well, at least we have till, what is it, June first, before we'll start seeing people, I'm thinking. Because that's when they're, oh, I don't know, did Minnesota jump on that unemployment ban? They had to show, uh, our.
I haven't heard anything or anything. I haven't seen anything come through for our M and B A thing.
Don, would you like to make a motion to adjourn?
He's so moved.
Yeah, I'm making a motion. I'll second.
Apparently Nick doesn't want to go home, does he?
Okay, still concerned about the J break.
So I don't think it is annoying that computer generated racing or J break in this state sector.